All right, so welcome to the April 17th meeting of the Milton Select Board. Our first item of business is going to be an executive session. And so I am going to, what the process for this, for those who are joining the call is, we're going to go into executive session, which means those who are not on the board, or Mr. Dennehy are going to be excluded, are going to be asked to leave the meeting, or are locked out of the meeting. And then we're going to give you a time where we expect to come back into open session. It's about 12:05 now. Katie and Melinda, I'm thinking maybe 15 minutes. Do you think we may be longer than that?
Yeah.
Sounds reasonable.
What's up? Katie?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, all right, so it's almost 12:05. Why don't we tell the public that we will be coming back into executive session right around 12:20? And so you can dial in back around then. And maybe Hillary can put you in a waiting room if it's early, or, but it'll be right around 12:20, we expect. So I will make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss this following items of business, believing that having such a discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board. Number one, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically with Milton Patrol Officers Union. Two, to discuss collective bargaining with respect to the Milton Superior's Officers Unit. And we will be returning to open session. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. All right, so we are going to be going into executive session. All right, we are back to public session. So before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
to the republic which it stands. Justice for.
Okay, thank you for that. Item four, five, rather, is public comment. Yes, public comment, item five. So for anyone who's on for public comment, the way we've been doing this is everyone is muted typically, except for the board members or someone participating in the meeting. For public comment, what we do is we unmute all the lines. And then if you could say your name, and if you were on the phone, say the last four digits of your, state the last four digits of your phone number, so we can identify you. So state your name. If you're on the phone, say the last four digits of your number. And then we will mute all the phones again, all the lines again, and we will unmute those in order for the purposes of citizen speak. So you have the opportunity to speak. So again, we're going to unmute all the phones. If you want to participate, say your name. If you're on the phone, pardon me, state the last four digits of your of your phone number, so we know where you are and know who to unmute. Then we will mute everyone again and unmute those who are speaking. I hope that's not too confusing. So Hillary, if you could unmute the lines. Okay, does anyone wish to participate in citizen speak? Please state your name. And if you're on a telephone, please state the last four digits of your phone. Going once, going twice. And I don't believe we have anyone for citizen speak. So we will go, Hillary, if you could mute all the phones again, except for the the numbers and Mr. Dennehy.
Before I do, Mr. Chair, we just had one late entry to the Zoom. If you wanted to offer that.
Okay.
Call her an opportunity.
Okay, all right.
No, it's Fred Hansen. Fred doesn't speak.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, thank you, Fred. All right, so Hillary's going to mute all the lines except for the members and Mr. Dennehy. And then we will continue with the with the agenda. Item six is COVID-19 update. Do we have anyone, I'm sorry, do we have Caroline on for the COVID-19 update? I don't know that.
Mr. Chair, no, Caroline wasn't going to join us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she did pass a tidbit of information on to me. The number of confirmed cases in Milton through yesterday at 4:00 PM is 105. And she did want me to reiterate social distancing, wear a mask if you can, all the things we've been hearing. You know, I can repeat myself if you want me to, but it's the standard that this virus is in our community and people need to take steps to social distance, not congregate, and make sure that they're taking the necessary precautions and following CDC guidelines.
Thank you, Mike. And actually, along those lines, under the subject of COVID-19 update, at our last meeting, we approved a what we called then a proclamation, but town council has changed it to an advisory. We approved a stay-at-home and face covering. Now it's an advisory, subject to some changes. Ms. Collins had some suggestions and Mr. Wells had some suggestions. And so we tried to make those changes to comport with what people wanted. And town council has reviewed it, made a couple of changes for what he saw as legal compliance. And so, but there was some, there was at least one member who was reticent despite the last, despite the last meeting of going forward with this stay-at-home and face covering advisory. So we wanted to bring it up again. We didn't want to go forward with it if there was any change of mind on this. So I'd like to get the members here to either reaffirm the fact that they want to do this or not. So this is the, again, the advisory that was circulated earlier this week and then again this morning.
Mr. Chair, this is Richard. I'll make a motion to approve the advisory. My only caveat is that I don't know if town council's with us. I think I made reference in to the legislature yesterday. One is, I think perhaps we need to put up some stronger signage with the town decal, public cal, the signatories, the police department, those who are real key players in this. And secondly, is given, is this is going to be a long-term thing and as things move forward, I just want to have the ability. I did have once follow-up conversation with the chief that should have come that we have to put in some type of fines similar to like Cohasset and Citroen. But we have that ability. But other than that, I think we could do that, given what the summer brings. So other than that, I'm fine to make a motion to approve it as is.
Okay, Katie, I saw you say second, but I didn't hear you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Oh, Melinda?
I just wanted to say that I appreciated Richard offering the additional guidance since he had brought that up the other night, because that helped understand what more we could could do, especially with the signage at this point.
Okay, great. So motions, any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, it's going to be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulish, yes. All right, so we can, Mike, Dennehy, hopefully we can, maybe, I know it's late, but on Friday, I'm not sure if we'll be able to get the signed copy out today as well, but maybe we can try to do that. That would be, that would be useful, if we can try to get that out today, if possible.
Certainly.
Okay. So that is, oh, and the items you brought up, Richard, I guess, you know, we can follow up with town council on the more long-term issue and whether there might be some question of fines at some point. And then the stronger signage, I guess that would be really with Mr. Dennehy, probably. Is that right?
I think we can do the signage. I don't think we need to take a vote. I think.
No, yes.
Like then, they create signs. I went all, I looked at Quincy's. I took a ride down there to see Cohasset. I think Waymouth has something. I think, I thought I heard some comments from either Kevin Crissom or some of the parks that they were tearing down the tape. So I think something that's very strong and, because as I say, we're probably going to be in this for all of the summer.
Okay. All right, so we will follow up on that. So the next item, I see Judy Barrett on the line, so maybe we'll take up the resident, East Residence at East Milton, 40B comment letter next, which was circulated earlier in the meeting. And Hillary, if you could unmute Judy, that would be great. Judy, are you with us?
I am, how is everyone?
Very well. Very well.
So Mike, I just, I just called in in case you need me. I don't, you know, just let me know if you need something from me. I thought it might help if I listened to the board's discussion, because I know there's a deadline pending here and thought this would be easier.
Yep, appreciate that. The deadline, just to go form over substance for a minute, the deadline is technically Monday. Monday is technically a holiday. So we have reached out once again to Mass Housing to point out to them that Monday is a holiday, and so we should at least get a day or two after that. And, you know, as with our prior drafts, we'd like to get this up on the, up on the website so people can, you know, take and make any further comments on it. So I think we can assume we don't need to get it in on Monday, since they're not, they're closed on Monday.
That's right.
So then the question will be, how do we finally approve this? Do we, do we try to get a meeting on Tuesday and send it in on Tuesday? Do we try to have a meeting on Tuesday to do for final approval and send it on Wednesday? And I apologize for the compressed timeframe, but.
My recommendation is that you have a meeting Tuesday and get it in on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Unless they give you in writing an extension.
Yeah.
I would get it in on Tuesday.
All right. So Mike, you know, in terms of posting the meeting to do that with the holiday, I'm sure if it's, it may have to be an emergency meeting on Tuesday afternoon. So if we could, on Tuesday, is there a particular time that's better or worse for the members?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So I'm listening to your discussion. We can approve this today?
So we can, we can. What we've done in the past is approve the draft, then put it on the website for any additional comments that we might get. So we wanted to leave the opportunity to just finally approve any additional comments that we got in, but we can approve it today, you know, subject to any additional comments. I just, my concern is that if something comes up, if we get a comment in, you know, over the weekend or Monday, that, you know, is important to include, then we probably want, we'd want to have the opportunity to do that. That's the only, I think.
So I'll be glad to make a motion to approve it pending any final comments to be made by Monday or Tuesday. I'll take any friendly note whenever once, but I'll make a motion to approve the 40B site eligibility application letters pending any final comments.
Richard, I'll second it, but I need to add a something, I mean, that the comments be directed to the chair and the chair incorporate any comments.
I'll accept that as well. I'm fine with however you want to put it. I just think, I think given here, Judy, I've learned from the tone of your voice and just knowing how government works in this, I'd be far more comfortable, given where we are right now, timelines, dates, holidays, to make that motion. And let's get it approved now pending those comments.
I agree with that. I think the letter was very good, Judy. It's, I think it's in pretty good, I think it's in very good shape. But I did send over a couple of minor comments. And it sounds like Melinda had some as well, and I don't think we've seen the final draft yet, so.
I, the only reason, Katie, I didn't send another draft was that I wasn't sure where Mike or anybody else, you know, on the board. So I just thought I'd hold off until this meeting. And then this afternoon, I would send another draft. That's all right with you. But I did get your comments. I got Melinda's and I appreciate them. Thank you.
My suggestion would be that if we can get that sent over quickly, say within the next half hour, if you have it ready, Judy, then if you go up on the website before town hall closes at 1:30 and it could be emailed to the East Milton Neighborhood Association, they can take your distributing it to some of their members and we can put it out. I don't know if it'll be the last one, it might not be an email blast, but at least it's out today and it can be, I would give a deadline of sometime on Monday for comments to be sent into the, to the town administrator and the town administrator and the chair. I think the letter could be finalized and ready to go on Tuesday.
Okay. So.
I agree, I agree with Katie. I think that's good. I think we should, the time is on the essence here. I'm way more comfortable moving this forward and getting this done in as timely a manner up there with all the comments incorporated. Up there, meaning on the website.
So Judy, if you could, if you could send the draft with the comments included, is it possible to do that in the next half hour? I'm sorry, we're running, we're running, oh, Melinda, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, we're running.
We're running into the 1:30 town hall closing. And so we'd like to try to get it up on the website before town hall closes today.
I think I can, I think I can, Mike. You know, I didn't realize you closed at 1:30. I probably should have checked the website, but my towns all have different times that they close on Fridays. So I wasn't thinking about it, but if the comments I need to address are those which I received from Katie and Melinda, then I think I could just do that and get the letter back to you. I can send you both a red line and a clean version.
That would be great. That would be great.
Okay.
And Mike Dennehy, is it possible, if we get that the next half hour, to get it, get it on the website and get it to the East Milton Neighborhood Association?
Yeah, I'm very confident between Hillary and Jen and their expertise in posting stuff. That would be great. My concern is, just to back up a little bit, is to get the other meeting posted as quickly as possible, because that, the clerk's office does close at 1:30.
So let's, let's post a meeting just, just so we have it for Tuesday, in case anything comes up.
What time, Mike?
Well, I was asked, better, earlier is better for the members. If you can do something earlier in the day, and it'll just be to, you know, if we have to take up anything and we can, we can cancel it if, you know, if there's nothing. Melinda?
Oh, I just, when you were done, I wanted to make sure that, is finance meeting at eight still?
Yes, it is, yep. Tuesday morning.
So just.
I gave a hard cut out at nine to the schools. They have a meeting to go to.
So could we meet at, could we meet at nine? Richard, does that, does that work for you? And again, it's a placeholder in the event that we need it.
I'm sorry. I'll do whatever you want, Mr. Chair. You just tell me when to be there, I'll be there.
Okay. All right. All right, so Mike, so let's try to do it for Tuesday at nine. I think we're going to have to style it as an emergency meeting because of the deadline that we're facing for Mass Housing and the fact that, the fact that, you know, they haven't extended it. And, and we hope, you know, there's a good chance that we won't have to go through it if there's no, no material changes to the letter.
Okay, if I'm understanding it correctly, you're going to take a vote on what Ms. Barrett has put together, that she's going to submit later today. We'll post that on the.
I have a motion on the floor right now, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ready to go today.
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
It's going to be, we're going to approve this draft. We're going to get it up on the website. We're going to circulate it and see if we get any final comments. And then it's going to be pending, you're going to, the motion is that that the chair has been directed to incorporate the comments. But if there are material comments that I think the board needs to vote on, then we'll have a meeting set for Tuesday at nine in order for a final sign-off. We may not need that meeting, depending on what we get between now and Monday, say Monday at five for comments. But, but it's good to have it, it's good to have it there in case we do.
And it's just the one agenda item, right, Mr. Chair?
Just the one agenda item.
Thank you.
I think, yeah. Oh, Melinda?
I just wanted to offer, so people understand, because we haven't, no one's seen my comments or Katie's. Mine are largely stylistic, so they don't change the, the the actual stints of the letter. And I appreciate Judy's work on it and actually every, every town department or everybody. So thank you.
My comments, I can just report, were pretty minor. I didn't move them in front of me, but they were to add the fact we had two meetings rather than one on this topic with the public. We had, just to make sure that the Falcone Companies are referenced consistently throughout the document and to, in the first page, that it was not only the Neighborhood Association involved in 2017, but our board and the planning board were involved. I think those were the main comments.
Yeah, they were, Katie, and they were, they were great.
And I think we just want to be sure, Mike, Mike Dennehy, that we attached the graphics that Cheryl Taggias from the planning board put together for us, which were, again, excellent in this case, just as in the other two.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if that's what you want me to do, why don't I sign off and get this done so I can get it to Mike to get it on the website? Is that all right? Do you need anything else from me?
Perfect, Judy, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, have a good weekend. I'll be back to you shortly. Bye email. Bye.
All right, Richard's, Richard's motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this will be roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulish, yes. All right. Item eight is topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. So the first topic is, there has been a lot that has come up recently about the police unions in social media and, I guess, other areas. And so earlier today, the Select Board and Executive Session approved a statement with respect to the discussions with the police unions. And I will read this statement now and, and we'll probably put this up on the website as well. So it reads, "Statement of the Milton Select Board. Recent public statements by Milton's two police unions claiming that four members of the Select Board and the town administrator do not support them are inaccurate. The town administrator has been engaged in informal contract discussions with police unions for many months. The police unions have stated that it was a, quote, 'relaxed format,' close quote. A few months ago, at the request of the town administrator, the chair of the Select Board joined him in the discussions with the police unions. This was welcomed by the unions and supported by the boards, by the board. By March 9, 2020, according to the police unions, they were, quote, 'extremely close,' close quote, to reaching agreements with the town. Within days, the COVID-19 pandemic exploded into a crisis in Massachusetts and across the country. Governor Baker issued a stay-at-home advisory. Schools, businesses, and religious organizations closed or reduced operations. Milton and other communities declared states of emergency. Capital markets swung wildly and unemployment claims skyrocketed. The national, state, and local economies moved into recession almost overnight. The four members of the Milton Select Board, who have been personally attacked, and the town administrator, all support Milton's public safety personnel and first responders. They all believe that public safety personnel and first responders are entitled to a fair contract. The question is, in this time of great uncertainty and economic freefall, what amount of salary increase for the police unions can the town sustain without having an adverse, to adversely decrease town services? During the past month, many communities have paused salary negotiations with unions until there is greater economic clarity. For Milton, there has been no such pause in its efforts for the police unions. While the Select Board has met twice per week to deal with a myriad of urgent COVID-19 issues, it has also continued to work hard on contracts for the police unions. Most recently, on Wednesday, April 15, two days ago, the police union representatives were told that the town was finalizing a proposal and that they would have it the next day. Notwithstanding that, the police unions began a propaganda campaign of personal attacks that evening. As promised, the next day, despite the uncertainty and the economic collapse caused by COVID-19, the town offered the police unions a three-year contract with salary increases of 7%. This is more than other town unions received before the COVID-19 crisis. And it is certainly more than any other union has received since the onset of the COVID-19 crisis that we know of. The reason for this is, the Select Board and the town administrator continue to support first responders, the Milton Police, and fair contracts for the police unions. And I will add, for the second and third years of this proposal, as things stand, stand right now, we don't quite know how we're going to pay for it. But we're going to figure it out. And the reason that we're going to figure it out is because they're worth it. So I don't know if there's any other comments from any members of the board. Ms. Conlon?
Yes. I support this statement. I voted for it, as you know, and I, I'd like to add a couple of thoughts of my own. I am very disappointed in the union's social media campaign. They've been waging over the last 36 hours. I think it's been unnecessary, divisive, kind of productive. And it is certainly not what the town needs, residents of the town need in a time of global pandemic. The statements that the unions have posted on Facebook pages to the effect that only one member of this board is supporting them and that the other four members and the town administrator refuse to support them, as the statements you said are false. And the reason that they're false is that the strategy for collective bargaining is discussed in the executive session and it's confidential. No member of either of the police unions has ever reached out to me about their contracts in this year. I've been on this board for seven years. I have voted in favor of prior contracts for both police unions. And I have not heard from any of them. I have not had any conversations with any of the members of the unions about the current negotiations and discussions. So my reaction is, how dare the police union say that I don't support them? I heard of the police unions, fire union, all of our other public safety personnel first responders during my years on this board, and I will continue to do so. And I hope that this social media campaign will be put to rest and that the unions will get back to the table and discuss issues with the town in a reasonable manner and in a productive way. We certainly support them. We support the work they do. Their work is challenging. They're on our front line. And they have the full support of everyone on this board. And it's important that we all recognize that. And that if there's, if there's any division or any, any indication that a member or some members of this board are not supporting our public safety, that all of us will stand up and state that all of us do support the public safety personnel. And our town administrator certainly supports the public safety personnel. So that's, that's what I wanted to add to the statement, and I thank you for that.
Any, any other comments from the members?
Mr. Zulish, I'm going to speak. I didn't intend to. As you know, I was not part of this, and I did relay comments to you. I, I, this is very untenable for me. Clearly, I have a, as the members know, I have a deep love for policing. And I've grown to have a deep love for being on this board. As I said, I think communication was part of the problem here. And I take any blame for any part I played in it. Clearly, they know that I support them deeply. And it's sad that we got to where we are in this. And as I say, I think there's some blame on our part as well. And I'm not going to get into it, dear people, I take it. And I understand, I'm going to abstain from the vote, but I understand the fact that we're all of you are in this. Thank you.
Anything else? You know, oh, Melinda?
No, it's okay, Mike, go ahead.
No, no, you can go ahead.
Well, I, I just want to support both what Katie said and what Richard said. Any situation that happens is, is created as a whole. And while I, I think we have the best of intentions, and I'm sure they do too, I really would like this to get back on track. It's extremely sad, especially at a time when so many people are suffering, that that we, that we're, we're in this state. And I hope that we can put this aside. And there can be real dialogue. So any missteps, I think, that were made, and probably on, on both sides, were not made on purpose. And, and I think we just want to get back to a good place together.
And I think it's fair to say that there is no distance between any of the members of this board and the proposals that have been made. We, all the proposals have been by. We, all the proposals have been by a majority. They've been supported by all the members of this board, not one. Not, they haven't been not supported by one. They've all been supported by all the members of the board. So we certainly have acted as one on this. So to, to call out four as, and separate is just not, is not reality. Let me end with this. My father was in law enforcement for more than 30 years. He was a state trooper. He was a Brockton police officer. He was a Brockton police sergeant. He was a detective lieutenant in the state police. He was a state police detective captain. Part of my adult life was spent working shoulder, shoulder to shoulder with state police officers to put criminals in jail. One of those state police officers died from coronavirus just last week. So when someone says that I don't support first responders, when they put my name on a sign that says anti-first responders, they are making it very, very personal. There is no honor in false propaganda. There is no dignity in personal attacks. And on behalf of my family, I resent it. All right. Item nine, public comment response. We had no public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Topics that weren't reasonably anticipated. I think Ms., Ms. Collins has a couple of topics that have come up since we made the agenda.
Oh, well, I, I will also give this information to other people such as Caroline and the Milton Residence Fund, but I was on a call MAPC about food insecurity and Congressman McGovern also on, on that. And the, the real topic was Project Bread, who will help people get onto SNAP, which is really our best hope because 38% of people in Massachusetts are food insecure right now because of this. And it's definitely going to increase. May and June are going to be much worse. We expect that for rental as well. You know, people will need more rental assistance. So the number for the Food Source Hotline, which can get you signed up for SNAP and also help you find wherever you are, the resources you need to get food is 1-800-645-8333. It's 1-800-645-8333. And this is a, this is a problem that so many people share and it will make every community stronger if people reach out and get the help they need. So please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. All right. Any other items that weren't reasonably anticipated since the last week? So, so we will get the.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chair, this one. I just want to follow up to Melinda's and I was going to bring this up anyway. I didn't know where to go with it, but I, as we, I don't know if anyone noticed yesterday, the city of Quincy, that the, I think it was the Quincy Chamber of Commerce, which is aligned with the, their Affordable Housing Trust, created a fund to help people exactly in this situation that Melinda's referring to, particularly with their rents. And I know we've already taken some steps with the Milton Residence Fund and the food pantry. I just want to, maybe more on the other ones speaking with them, make it clear that if they have to come back, I mean, make sure that they do because we're, we're 5 million unemployment again yesterday. Just, I think that we're going to have to be in the social service agency a little bit more than we ever have been. I think we just need a bit prepared for that. So that's all I, I wanted to bring up. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Richard. That, how, Affordable Housing Trust and, and Housing Committee met the other night and started talking about rental assistance program and Katie has reminded us to maybe on, at the next meeting to start talk this, but, but, but we have the ability to, to do that because there are already systems in place through the Milton Residence Fund. And Noreen and I are going to actually attend a webinar just to make sure we have all the, the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
Thank you.
Add on that point to build on what you said that, Judy, I sent forwarded an email to the chair and to the town administrator that the United Way is offering communities a service in which we can have a specialized page on their site in which residents of our town could donate through that page to Milton nonprofits or the Food Pantry here in Milton or the Council on Aging so that residents are giving within their own community. And that's, is that something that we might want to consider pursuing? I was referred to that by a member of the select board in Winchester who said that their community did it. They thought it was very easy to set up and it might be something we want to think about. Now, we're in the unique situation where we have the Governor Stoughton Fund. Most towns don't have a fund like. But this would allow residents to contribute and it might be something that we want to think about exploring.
Richard, do you have something on that?
Nope, I'm good. I'm fine with whatever you want to do. I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah. I think that, I think that makes good sense. I mean, I guess the question is operationally, how do we make it happen? And, go ahead, Katie.
At this point, we, we probably have an initial conversation with the United Way. Something we want to, how easy it is to do or how how quickly it could be set up and what our role would be, what your role would be. I think it's a temporary thing while this COVID period is going on.
So, Mr. Chair, just to follow up to what Katie's saying, is there anything in town? Is there anything that with Governor Stoughton money that we could be helping right now in addition to what we're already doing that perhaps we're not thinking of? Like Katie mentioned, the United Way, I just, it's such a diverse field out there with so many that have been plunged into this that we're never in it before.
So, so we, I mean, I, so I guess one thought is to try to coordinate the efforts and, and funnel them through and have one or two members try to, try to get a handle of it. And, and, and either if it's just an operational issue, go to Mr. Dennehy and say, hey, you want to, you want to do this? And, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what kind of, I'm not sure what kind of board approval would be necessary for that kind of thing. I suppose we should, you know, bless. If Katie, you have a thought on that?
Well, the chair of the board in Winchester told me that their town administrator was able to coordinate it with the United Way. And he said it really was very little lifting on their end. It was United Way doing most of the work. So I, maybe we could, yeah, ask Mike to touch base if there, I can get the information, their town administrator and see whether it's feasible here or whether it's worth us pursuing. Just initial research into it.
Melinda?
Certainly. Thank you.
And I, and I suspect that that would end up with a, a sort of a, a two-pronged approach because the Governor Stoughton Fund has more stringent terms that are placed upon it. So we would also need to make sure that with town council where the money is going to the, you know, correct places. Whereas this other fund could probably be used, as Richard said, for a more broad set of concerns. So thank you, Katie.
So it sounds like we'll start with that and then to the extent that we, we, we have ideas or inputs that we can coordinate between now and next week, we'll see what further we can do on that.
Right. And is, is, is Governor Stone going to be on the 22nd? Because I'm trying to, to together proposals so people can sort of understand what we're looking at.
If, if, if you're ready, then we'll put it on.
Yeah, I, I, I think there, there's enough to get started.
Okay, great. So we'll put that on for, put that on for next Wednesday. You're actually going to have to post it with the holiday Monday, get it posted, so. So we'll just put it on, we'll get it on the agenda. Okay. All right. Anything, anything further? So Mike, we, we might want to, if we post it for Wednesday, we might, I don't know if it's too late. We have to try to quickly do a.
We haven't posted for Wednesday yet, Mr. Chair. That was a call for myself, yourself, Madam Vice Chair and Hillary at the end of this public meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Good, good, good. All right. And we can still get it posted today? Because we got to get it posted today.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, okay.
And that's going to be a seven o'clock meeting on, on Wednesday. It's a normal one.
Normal meeting. And the clerk will be here on, clerk will be here to be able to get it posted, do we think, or?
I've confirmed with them, they're able to do that and, and that we can have this, that follow-up meeting. We can stay here on Zoom. We don't need to have a separate.
Oh, good, good. All right. Thank you, Hillary. All right. Well, that's helpful. That's all helpful. So we'll put that on. We'll, we'll, we'll see what else we can do besides the United Way between now and next Wednesday. Anything else? So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion been made, the second, roll call vote, Ms. Collins? Ms. Collins? Okay. You, I saw your voice.
Sorry.
Your mouth moved.
Yeah.
Ms. Conlan?
Yes.
And this, Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
Mrs. Zulis, yes. Absent having the meet on Tuesday, we will see you again on.